It is six o'clock, Monday, November 3rd, 2025. I'll call this meeting to order for the City of Peru Common Council and Peru City Hall Council Chambers. If you would please rise and follow Councilman Saadachne even the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Stephen Kikekendall.
(Inaudible) Lord, we thank you for this time that we can gather together. Pray that you have blessed the business that comes before you. Bless this board, bless our mayor, bless all the first responders in this city. Pray that you would just continue to pour out your blessings upon this city financially, God, that we can see greater things happen in this coming year. Would be with us in this meeting tonight, help us to respect one another and to love one another the way that you would have us to love each other. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Anderson?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Huber?
Here.
Murphy?
Here.
Saadachne?
Here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Ulri?
Here.
Thank you. First item of business is the reading and correcting of the minutes from the regular meeting October 6th and the special meeting on October 27th.
I make a motion to suspend the rules and adopt the minutes as written.
Second. Roll call.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saadachne?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ulri?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to the committee liaison reports. We'll start with Councilman Steven, excuse me, Councilman Anderson.
I have nothing to report.
Councilman Fisher.
Attended the Board of Works meetings on the 7th and the 21st for approval of claims, city payroll, and, you know, any type of street closures or for events and so forth. And also at those meetings, police and fire personnel and policy changes. Attended the October 1st Peru Utilities meeting to hear updates on various projects like the long-term control plan, the lead line replacement that's going on. Went to the October 8th Makita meeting, that's the economic development, to find out the status on and updates on economic development activities. Attended the October 20th Recycling District as the liaison out there and discussed any kind of vendor issues and projects that they have. Rediscovered Downtown Peru meeting on October 23rd. Rediscovered Downtown Peru is the one that does the second Saturday activities and the Cole Porter Festival and facade grant updates and so on. No meetings for the incentive review committee or the Miami County 9/11 or the Committee on Wage negotiations that I'm liaison on. Other meetings, I went to the Miami County Commissioners meetings, October 6th, 20th, and this morning on the 2nd. And I went to a Miami County Council meeting and a Board of Building Appeals Committee or meeting for the city which reviews, you know, buildings, homes and commercial buildings and so on that have issues that need to be resolved. And then attended the City Plan Commission Board of Zoning Appeals on the 28th. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Huber?
Yes. Got my update from Greg at the animal control. It's my understanding there were a couple of dogs over on the, near the West 7th and Union Street area that had been a repeated issue, repeated felons, I guess. And they, folks that owned those dogs have relocated, left town, so those dogs are gone. They, sorry, this is a little more detailed, but Greg has given me a lot more information. They did participate at the Picker's Place for adoption, you know, visibility. They had one dog that went for trial adoption and it's working out well, scheduled to be neutered on the 11th of November. Another dog that met her future family, so they've got a couple of adoptions out. Currently at the shelter, they've got one dog that's there for, on what they call bite hold, then there's a stray, two for stray, three for on home trials that are not there, and then one foster home. So, another thing, I guess they're called coronda beds, and I'm not familiar with that, but he said that at one point in time here, about 10 years ago, they had a program where they were trying to get people to make donations to help support that. And someone could tell me, I would assume, are these, does anybody know are these the beds that are raised to keep the dogs off the ground? I don't know, but they're trying to raise money again for that. So if there's anyone that wants to help the shelter, donations would be accepted to go towards whatever you want to do. Then, that's all I have for Greg. The airport, they did the Kalamazoo trip, it was a bus trip, was successful. They had 18 people go, which covered the expenses, and they had a good time. And they did finish the crack ceiling at the airport. And Kelly wanted to put out a good word for Andy Hobbs for doing a fantastic job, and we appreciate that. Talked to Brian at the Street Department this morning. They're still working on leaf pickup. All the crack ceiling that is going to be done this year has been completed, and they're preparing equipment for winter. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Murphy?
The Parks Board meeting was held on October 9th. They reported that they have successfully closed the splash pad for the year. The irrigation system at the golf course is completed. They are planning for next year for the rates for the course, but already have 21 parties committed to outings. Park bathrooms are on the list to be improved next year. They have already received a request for Alzheimer's pickleball tournament, and then started discussions on some additional potential projects.
Councilman Saadachne?
Yeah, like Tim, I attended the Miami County Board of Commissioners this morning. I just wanted to add, named the reappointment of Makita, board members Rebecca Wright, James Commerford, Kenny Hansen, John Geyer. The courthouse Christmas party was approved November 22nd. And also, money's been set aside for road repairs on Walbash Road, $1 million pop-up hike, $1,500,000. I attended the Civic Center meeting, just want to make the public aware, there will be an open house on December 7th from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Civic Center. Historical Society, just a couple of things I wanted to share. They made, this is from the last meeting, they pulled in $181 in the gift shop, anonymous donor, $15,000, so, plus $500 in membership fees. And they meet every second Wednesday, second Wednesday. And then, last of all, the county council passed their budget for next year. That was kind of a two-day affair. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Stevenson?
I have nothing to report.
Councilwoman Ulri?
October 22nd, I attended the Civic Center meeting along with Pete. There were 17 events in October and 13 scheduled already for November. And again, like Pete said, we'll be having a Christmas open house on December 7th, 2:00 to 4:00. And then we are needing to add a member to the committee due to one of our members moving out of state. October 28th, I attended the Peru Plan Commission meeting, the petition to rezone parcel 52-08-27-302-409.00-01663W3 was voted in favor to rezone from a B3 to an R1. And also, the declaratory resolution for the Redevelopment Commission to establish two separate allocation areas, two North Broadway and 71 and 73 South Broadway was voted in favor of. Following that was the zoning appeals meeting, which I also attended. And then October 20th, I attended the county commissioner meeting. And I just want to add, that's where EMS change was discussed, and I just want to add that I am not in favor of the way that's being handled by the county. That's it.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to clarify something because, I just want to make sure everybody understands, the dogs I was talking about, I called the felons, not the people that owned them and moved to Logan's Board. So I didn't want any, you know, in case somebody knew, they'd go, "What the heck is he talking about?" I do it, I don't know.
Thanks for that clarification. Appreciate the clarification. Thank you for the liaison reports. We do appreciate hearing what's been going on in the last several weeks. First item on our list tonight is the promotion and swearing-in of Officer Adam Lear to Sergeant.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. As I've mentioned numerous times over the course of the almost past two years that the mayor's appointed me to this position, it's always a great thing for us to bring new officers and officers who have achieved good things, and it's always important, in my opinion, to publicly recognize all of our employees who have achieved something special in their careers. So, in that vein, I'm going to go off script for just a second because there are two people here besides Adam that I want to recognize tonight. So, my, one of my office team members, Kyla Lear, who's behind me, who's married to Adam, and our clerk treasurer Andrea Noonan, both of them just graduated in the last week of October from the Miami County Leadership Class that's sponsored by the Miami County Economic Development Group. The program connects current and aspiring leaders in the community with various leaders in the community, businesses, and organizations. It is a worthwhile program. Brooke, who's back here, does a fantastic job of running that program. It's designed to be able to not only connect these folks, but for those who are not already in leadership positions, find leadership positions within the community. So, Kyla has done a fantastic job in graduating from that. She is our second graduate in the last two years. My administrative assistant Diana Garner was our first graduate in quite some time from Peru PD. So I wanted to acknowledge them publicly as well, especially since Kyla is a member of our team at the Police Department, and their achievements. So, for Adam Lear, for her husband Adam Lear, who were swearing in tonight, he has not been employed with us for too terribly long. We hired him back in June. But I think the fact that we're, he was a lateral to us, and I'll kind of go over his bio a little bit, and we've already done that when we swore him in the first time. But I think that the fact that we have Adam here and is being promoted into sergeant's position, again, speaks volumes of the commitment that we have from our city council, our mayor, and our clerk treasurer. The things that have gone on over the course of the last two years for our department puts us in a position to have people that are this quality of what Adam is, to be able to come in and be able to immediately step into some of these leadership roles. I know that that is not possible without you guys, and I appreciate all the hard work and the dedication that you guys and investment that you guys have made in our department. So with respect to Adam Lear, again, he hired in with us on June 9th, 2025, but he's been a police officer since April of 2020, or a full-time police officer since April of 2020. He started his career as a full-time law enforcement officer, as the appointed Bunker Hill Town Marshal. He later became a merit deputy at the Miami County Sheriff's Office, where he attended the 223rd Basic Session of the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy. Soon-to-be Sergeant Lear holds a Bachelor of Arts degree from Southern New Hampshire University, and he will be wrapping up his master's degree from Indiana Wesleyan University next month. He is currently, when he wraps up his master's, he'll have his Master of Public Administration. In addition to his education, he is a certified generalist instructor through the Indiana Law Enforcement Training Board, a certified school resource officer, and is a crisis negotiator. So without further ado, he's going to be joined by his wife, Kyla, his children Kennedy, Elliot, and Olivia. Olivia's going to be holding the Bible for him as Andrea swears amen. Kyla's going to pin his badge, and Kennedy and Elliot are going to pin on his chevrons on his lapels.
You swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
And impartially.
Impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As a sergeant of the Peru Police Department.
As a sergeant of the Peru Police Department.
For the City of Peru, Indiana.
For the City of Peru, Indiana.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my ability.
And the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Moving into old business and seeing none, we'll move to new business. First item under new business is approval of the 2026 meeting dates for the Common Council City of Peru. I believe everybody has a copy of those in front of them. And unless there are some changes or discussion you would like to have regarding these dates, then I would ask for a vote. We'll do a roll call to see if your approval goes with these dates. Roll call.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saadachne?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ulri?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item under new business is Resolution 19-2025, a resolution of the City of Peru, Indiana authorizing the clerk treasurer of the City of Peru to deposit, invest, reinvest funds in local financial institutions designated as depositories. Do we have a motion to consider Resolution 19-2025?
I make a motion, we consider Resolution 19-2025.
I'd second that.
And roll call.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saadachne?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ulri?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Any questions or discussion regarding this resolution?
I'll just say, most cities do have this, but for some reason, we didn't have it in place, and so it's a good thing to have.
Any comments or questions, discussions regarding this from the council?
It's just basically stating that we're going to keep the funds within a financial institution in the city.
In most institutions, they ask that we do have this, so.
Then I would ask for a motion to adopt Resolution 19-2025.
I make a motion, we adopt Resolution 19-2025?
Second.
And roll call.
Saadachne?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ulri?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saadachne?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item under new business is Ordinance 25-2025, an ordinance to prohibit the use of public records for commercial purposes in Indiana. And I will let Andrea do a little further explanation as to why this is needed, but it seems like this is a, starting to become a reoccurring event for us.
We have been getting a lot of AI-generated FOIA requests from companies who are trying to build databases, like I currently have one that's requesting all permits that we have in our system as far back as it goes. And so what they're trying to do is build a database that a developer can go into and search at our expense. And so there, this was a hot topic at our AIMS Summit that I went to in the fall because they're happening more and more, and it's either permits or they're requesting things from the Fire Department or the Police Department, and they're just blanket requests because they're trying to build these databases that people can search through.
This does not mean that we would deny a legitimate FOIA request for information, but this just prevents businesses from creating a database to generate income off of information that we have in our city records. So that's basically what we're, what this ordinance covers. Questions, discussion?
We need to make a motion to consider.
Yes, we need a motion to consider.
Pardon me? I didn't hear that.
A motion to consider.
You have a motion to consider Resolution 24-2025?
I make a motion, we consider Ordinance 24-2025?
Second. And roll call.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ulri?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saadachne?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ulri?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saadachne?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ulri?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saadachne?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ulri?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saadachne?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item under new business is Ordinance 25-2025, an ordinance to rezone in the City of Peru. Do we have a motion to consider Ordinance 25-2025?
I make a motion that we consider Ordinance 25-2025.
Second. And roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saadachne?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ulri?
Yes.
Thank you. This is a property commonly known as 63 West 6th Street, petition to rezone from B3 to R1. You were provided with a layout showing the location of this property. Is there any, it was given a favorable approval. So this is the official request to rezone that.
Yes.
Yes. Favorable recommendation by the Peru Planning Commission. Comments, discussion, question?
I'll just add, yeah, this was the dentist's office, and it's been purchased, and he's turning it into a residential home that I believe he's going to rent out, and that's why he wants to change his zoning.
I would ask for a motion to adopt Ordinance 25-2025?
I make a motion, we adopt Ordinance 25-2025?
Second. And roll call.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saadachne?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ulri?
Yes.
Thank you. This is a property commonly known as 63 West 6th Street, petition to rezone from B3 to R1. You were provided with a layout showing the location of this property. Is there any, it was given a favorable approval. So this is the official request to rezone that.
Yes.
Yes. Favorable recommendation by the Peru Planning Commission. Comments, discussion, question?
I'll just add, yeah, this was the dentist's office, and it's been purchased, and he's turning it into a residential home that I believe he's going to rent out, and that's why he wants to change his zoning.
I would ask for a motion to adopt Ordinance 25-2025?
I make a motion, we adopt Ordinance 25-2025?
Second. And roll call.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saadachne?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ulri?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item under new business is a request from Makita to approve certain matters in connection with the formation of a certain economic development area. Mr. Tid?
Back on October the 8th, the Miami County Economic Development Authority, serving in its capacity as the Redevelopment Commission, passed a declaratory resolution declaring its intent to establish two separate TIFF allocation areas within the city's consolidated economic development area, or TIFF district. Those two separate allocation areas are known as Two North Broadway, which encompasses basically the former First Farmers Bank and Trust Bill. of the committee reports. The Peru Plan Commission approved the actions of the Economic Development Authority with declaring these two separate allocation areas, and an amendment to the overall declaratory or development plan for this area. So, tonight, we are here. Our next step is to present a resolution for consideration by the council to actually approve the actions of the Economic Development Authority, of the Redevelopment Commission, and also the Planning Commission. And what we're doing here are these two properties, 2 North Broadway and 71 and 73, are already in a TIFF district. They're already in the consolidated TIFF district for the city. But what we're doing is setting up separate allocation areas. So, there, we're pulling those out of the general TIFF district and setting up these separate allocation areas in anticipation of the redevelopment that we believe is going to happen with both of these properties. So, again, I would ask for your favorable consideration. I believe the ordinance number is 18, or not ordinance, Resolution Number 18-2025. Answer any questions that the council may have.
Do we have a motion to consider Resolution 18-2025?
I make a motion, we consider Resolution 18-2025?
Second. And roll call?
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saad Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ulri?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, we can have discussion on Resolution 18-2025.
And Jim, you know, I talked with Brooke because I was confused by this, which is easy to do. But, and she, she explained this to me, but it is, you know, maybe you can explain a little bit more as to why we're making these separate, for the group, the separate allocated TIFF areas. Yeah.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. The reason is, is because then we can negotiate the use of the incentive specifically on that parcel. The way it happens, and I believe, if I remember, 250-some parcels?
248.
248, something like that, we currently have in the city's consolidated TIFF district just within the US 2431 allocation area. Other properties, one property that may be, there's a lot of investment going into that, which increases the overall assessed value. So, you have one neighbor that's investing into their property and increasing overall assessed value within the TIFF. But then, you have the next door in labor that doesn't make any investment whatsoever, and the assessed value declines. The situation is that the assessed value from the person that's making the improvement, some of that assessed value has to go back to offset the decline in assessed value from the other, that which negatively impacts the TIFF and our availability to incentivize at the, at the level we should be with people that are making the investment in the community. So, with what you're doing here, the only impact on assessed value is strictly isolated to that one particular property, and is not affected by other properties in the TIFF. We come to find out, just as an example, not to say here, we would do the same thing, but in Carmel, they have 91 separate allocation areas within their TIFF. Not saying we're going to do that, but it just puts us in a better position to incentivize and work with development of these properties. Let me also add that all you're approving here is for us to be able to establish the allocation area. You're not approving any incentive or anything like that at this point. We're only doing this in preparation of development that we see happening in the future.
Any more questions or discussions? If not, I'd ask for a motion to adopt Resolution 18-2025?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 18-2025?
Second. Roll call, please.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saad Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ulri?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saad Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ulri?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Saad Duchney?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Ulri?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing nothing further under new business, we'll move to communication. Do we have any communication from the council?
Don, I don't know, or Mayor, I don't know, I just want to make a, make a statement. There's a lot of discussion going on about EMS services, that the county is in the process of signing a new contract with a new vendor, and the city is, you know, the city is aware of that, and we're having discussions with the county and with Lutheran to gather more information on that. So, I don't, we don't talk, haven't talked about it. It's not been on the agenda, but it is under discussion, and the city council is aware of what's going on. I just want to make that for the record.
Thank you. That is correct. My goal as the mayor would be to provide the best EMS service for the city as we can. So, we are in discussion with the county currently about what their choices may be and what our opposition to that is, and what we believe would be the best EMS service for the city. So, yes, we are, we're currently having those discussions at the county and city level, and more will come, I'm sure, very soon. So, thank you, Councilman Fisher. Any communication from the audience? Yes, sir.
Mayor, I just would like to add, had the opportunity today to meet the new wing commander that has been assigned out to Grissom. Colonel John Bergman is coming, is now the permanent wing commander. And so, unfortunately, his assumption of command ceremony was going to be this next weekend, but with the government shutdown and stuff, they've had to cancel that. So, we'll try to have him come one night to a city council meeting, just to be able to introduce himself and address you, Mayor, and the city council.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Anything else? Seeing nothing further, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you. This meeting's adjourned.